Okay, could everyone take your seats, please? Everyone take your seats and we'll start the party. Alright, alright. We'll call this meeting to order, please, and would everyone rise for the invocation? And Councilman McIntosh, could you please lead us in invocation?
I'd be honored. All of us pray in our own ways. Would you please join the council in silent prayer tonight, remembering our troops protecting our liberties in the city we live? Amen.
Amen.
Councilman, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
It'll be an honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Councilman McIntosh, Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakta, Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longkart.
And he's not here. He's excused.
Yes.
Excused absence. He brought an excuse. Actually, someone else in there. Hey, good evening, everyone!
Good evening, Mayor!
Welcome to the City of Bonita Springs Council Meeting this evening, and we're going to have public comment on agenda items. Agenda items only, please, except for, I think I've given special dispensation to two of you out there. That's all the kind of power I got. That's it. That's it. Hi!
Hello, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to say a little bit of something that we know is going to be coming through tonight, we believe. More than forty years ago, the Bonita Springs Lions Club partnered with the Lee County Commission to build a ball field at the new sixty-acre community park in Bonita Springs. Lion Terry Lawhearn's father, Robert Lawhearn, who was the president of the Bonita Springs Lion League at the time, he spearheaded the community effort to get the park purchased and build the concession stand. When the property was secured, the Bonita Springs Lions donated twenty-one thousand in nineteen eighty-four for the backstop, dugouts, fencing, clay for the fields, and the irrigation. The county staff did the site work. In October nineteen eighty-four, the county commissioners passed a resolution introduced by Commissioner Roe Roberts to name the facility Lions Field. Since that time, the Lions Club has continued to make contributions to improve the ball fields, donating tens of dollars to sponsor teams, provide equipment, and for various needs of Little League, girls softball and baseball for the development of disabled. In recent years, Bonita Lions donated seven thousand five hundred for the scoreboard and another five thousand towards our girls softball facility. As president of our Bonita Springs Lions Club, I respectfully ask that Councilmember Slakta postpone his item to rename the ball field and invite him to meet with our board this next Monday to come up with a name that respects the forty years of Lions' contributions to the ball field and at the same time honors our veterans, of which we have many in our club. If the councilman chooses to move forward with the item this evening, we would suggest the field be named Lions Field in memory of our veterans. Thank you for your time, and it's Lion Catherine Lau, President of the Bonita Springs Lions Club, and very proud of it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I'm just gonna sashay right in, because I gotta go home and take care of Mom. She's gotta get out of here. Does ditto to what she said. Mr. Mayor, you were around that time. You probably remember when that-
You can't prove it.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
I probably got your- probably get your mom get a birth certificate out or something. Anyhow, baseball's been a great tradition in our town, and it's wonderful that the wounded warriors come to play. We welcome them, we love to have them, but we also want to make a respectful, you know, memory of the Lions' contributions as well, so I hope you'll consider that when you come to that item. And second, let me just take the Lions, you know. As a citizen, I hope that you'll look at, when we approved Orange Creek Manor, that is along Longfellow, now called American House, when you see that presentation, think about what's gonna happen when traffic comes down Imperial and turns down Longfellow if you choose to open it up. Same thing with Carolina Street over off of Royal. People are gonna be using that to travel to the other side of town, not necessarily in the neighborhood, and I would hope when we did the zoning for Orange Creek Manor, a condition of approval was to look at a turn lane analysis, and I hope you'll require that if you put it through. Thanks, Mayor, and you guys have a great week. Good luck in your council meeting.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Kathy McGrath, and I just wanna comment on, Mayor, your item here, thirteen A, and I would like to congratulate the new village of Estero and commend everybody who took the time to run. As I've said previously, you know in elections, there are no winners and no losers. Some get elected and some don't, but I just congratulate everyone who took the time and effort to run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Roger Brunswick with the Bonita Estero Association of Realtors, and I just wanna say that the Bonita Estero Association of Realtors, and I'm speaking on agenda item number, I think it's F, that we're pleased to be able to do our small part in helping to beautify the Bonita Springs downtown, the old Forty-One corridor. We're thankful for having the opportunity to participate in this program by offering our building and the people and art and public places, by offering our building as a canvas for art, and we also wanna thank you for the grant money that we are about to receive from the city, provided, that's been provided, to help defray a part of the cost of revamping our building on Old Forty-One. As Realtors, we're cognizant of the fact that a revitalized downtown area will bring new interest and to the area. It'll increase business opportunities in the downtown area, and from that, we will have new residents coming to our great city. Mayor is delighted to represent Bonita Springs through the National Association of Realtors and Florida Realtors throughout the world in our members' efforts to promote the city of Bonita Springs. Small-town charm, big, bright future, we love it, and I wanna especially thank the Art and Public Places Board, I wanna thank Arlene Hunter and the Community Development Staff for their guidance, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for your visionary approach to get the ball rolling in the redevelopment district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good evening, Council. My name is Steve Justician. I live at two-seven-zero-eight-three Matheson Avenue, which borders Longfellow, and the reason I'm here tonight is speaking opposition of letting Longfellow become a through street. When the plans for the American Home were originally proposed, my understanding that Longfellow was not to be a through street, and that considered, and at that time, it seemed like a good idea. I frequently use Longfellow Lane during walks and bike rides. I have seen schoolchildren use the road to go home from where the school bus stops on Matheson Avenue. The road is narrow, and there are no sidewalks or bike lanes on this road. Currently, there's not much traffic on this road, but I expect that will change if it becomes a through street. It seems conventional wisdom would dictate that without sidewalks, pedestrian and bike traffic would become more dangerous on that road. So I oppose this move unless, unless there are improvements to the road. Currently, it is narrow, and it doesn't have provisions for pedestrians and bikers. Also, even if you do approve it, I believe you should do it conditionally, that if the study that American Home may present shows that they expect a certain amount of traffic to be on that road after it is opened up, if it's found out that traffic exceeds that amount, then it should be closed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Bobby Byrd. I am a resident of Bonita Springs, and I'd like to speak on one, two comments. First, on our annual Celebrate Bonita, thank you for continuing to support our effort for that. It's a great time, and it's a great bonus that we have in our community that we would like to share with the residents of American House. And one way that they can do that is if they have access to Longfellow, to turn left and go down to Matheson and go to the dog park and go to downtown Bonita, where we have Riverside Park in the Lyles area, and we have the revitalization. I believe that we will be good neighbors, and I did notice today, too, I was looking at a map that was put out by the Chamber of Commerce dated 2013, that does indeed show Longfellow Road starts at Matheson and ends at Imperial, or starts at Imperial and ends at Matheson, I'm not sure which, but it does show the road on here, on this map, going through. It does not show that it stops at a certain plot and then starts up again. So I believe we will be very good neighbors. I believe our residents will be respectful of everybody else who lives in that neighborhood, and I'd like to invite them all, everyone who lives in that general area, whether it's Jarvis and Allen or on the other side of Imperial, to come to American House at the end of May for a meet and greet, so we can meet our new neighbors. We wanna meet them, they wanna meet us, and I don't think we need to be adversarial about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Vicki Douglas. I live in the Preserve. I just wanted to make a comment that I hope the city will do what's best for the city. I know there's a lot of people here for, a lot of people against. My personal concern is that Imperial Parkway will be very congested if that's the only way in and out for, I don't know how many projected people there are, but I would suspect with two-hundred-and-thirty apartments and maybe average that out between four and five-hundred residents, and you've got their help, then you've got the cafeteria, there's just a lot of people, a lot of trucks, and if that's the only way that they can get in and out, I can't see, I see them putting a turn lane on Imperial, which is great. I don't know if it's gonna be long enough. I hope so. And I just wanted to go on record so that you would know that my, my concern is the congestion and the traffic, and hopefully, if it were opened up, I love the idea of sidewalks and bike paths, and it'd be great if that was a possibility, but the city is getting so congested with traffic anyway that any time we can open up a corridor north, south, east, or west, I think it's a benefit. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello.
Hi.
First off, I apologize in advance for reading my notes, and as much it's easier for me to organize my thoughts, and I can feel my heart beating on in my chest. My name is Kristen Barber Finley, two-seven-zero-six-three Allen Street. Our family purchased our home in Allen Street in 2012, but I am a Bonita Springs native. Mr. Nelson, I grew up with your boys. I have two boys myself and a little girl.
It's not my fault.
I know them very well, actually.
Yeah, me too.
The Caputos are my cousins. I have two boys myself and a little girl. Councilmembers, please be advised that there are eleven children on Allen Street alone and one on the way. These children do not have voices or voting rights in our community, and it is our job as grownups to protect them. The eldest child on our block is seventeen, and the next in line is third grade. That one's mine, so that we have ten kids and one on the way ages third grade and under on our street. Three of those kids belong to me. My family has taken steps to divert the already growing traffic problem on our street. First, we tried the slow children at play sign, and councilmembers, I've made copies for all of you if you need those. This did not work. Traffic continued to blow past my kids and their friends, and I have been in several verbal applications with speeding automobiles. I have involved law enforcement, and at one point, someone removed our sign and tossed it around the corner onto Longfellow. A couple weeks later, a neighbor walking her dogs found it in the woods and returned it to our home. I then purchased traffic cones to alert drivers to slow down. My kids are not permitted outside without their cones, and this did help. As mind-boggling as it may be, cars will slow down for a cone, but not for kids. Things were fine and dandy until another driver decided to do donuts in the middle of the day around our traffic cone, and you can see the, the nice tire track. That's a recreation. The police did respond, and thank you God that our kids were inside eating lunch when this occurred. Bottom line is that we need to curb the impact that this new community is already having to our neighborhood by not allowing Longfellow as a through street. My kids are already in danger with speeding cars. I am already cleaning trash in my yard that doesn't belong to me, and the sheriff's office is familiar with a once-quiet block. This new development is already affecting the surrounding neighborhoods and the families in them. I am thankful to be here tonight to voice my family's position. We are not all retirees. I'm speaking for other working neighbors as well who couldn't be here for, for us tonight. Just because we may or may not be present at all the city council meetings doesn't mean the issues don't affect us. Keeping the road closed will lessen the impact on this rental community to our neighborhood, and I only wish owners, I were, I was an owner at the time of this development, was up for zoning. Opening Longfellow will only encourage the laziness of drivers to use our neighborhood as a cut-through to save minutes from their commute, all while destroying our neighborhood's quality of life. Keep Longfellow closed and private and protect our kids and neighbors. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay, that's a free one. That's it. That's it, though. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, hi.
Hi. Councilmembers and Mayor, I'm Cassandra Early, and I live on Allen Street. I've lived there for thirty-five years. First off, I'm not against the American rental, senior housing. We need it. It's needed everywhere. I'm against the opening of Longfellow to Imperial. There's too many units going up. They have two, over two-hundred in their first building. Eventually, there will be another building with another two-hundred, and they have another unit off to the side. The intersection at Matheson and Longfellow cannot handle the increase of people coming and going. Right now, you have to wait for a while, other vehicles come, you have a three, you have a T-intersection. You're waiting for people, you're waiting for trucks, other things, and if it's opened, that traffic will continue, especially as a shortcut for people. They're always looking for shortcuts. There's lights on Terry. People use, if they're going south in Imperial, they'll, they'll use our street to go down to Matheson rather than go all the way to Dean, or they will go down Terry, 'cause there's many lights, and they're gonna try to avoid anything they can, which means they will also speed. And when you're taking care of those units, rent, two-hundred-and-thirty rental units, you have the supports, you have the cleaners, the cooks, the maintenance, the yard people, and they all have vehicles. We had to put up a lot of traffic on Longfellow this summer when all, everybody was going to work there in the morning. It was like I-75, various vehicles going up and down the road at all times, and it's a very narrow road. I know they're gonna provide a van for their people, but that's only at certain times. You know, our senior citizens, they wanna go somewhere, they're gonna go. You know, they got a golfing date, they're gonna go meet their friends for lunch, they're gonna get in their car and go. Two-hundred-and-thirty units to begin with, minimum, maybe a hundred cars. You're asking for a potential for a lot of accidents because people are speeding. We see it all the time. The increase in traffic back and forth, and these people going through do not care about anything. They just wanna go from, take that shortcut. I was wondering, too, I measured Longfellow right now, and it's about sixteen feet wide. I don't know what the standard width of a street is, and I couldn't measure what they're doing down at the other end because they have one curb and they don't have another one. So if it is gonna be wider, you're gonna end up having a funnel effect that you're gonna have them go from wide to narrow, and they're all over the road. If you're walking, you're, you're in trouble. I've had people whiz by me really fast. There's a lot of walkers, bikers, right now using it. A lot of people walk, using their dogs to go down Matheson to the dog park or to Terry. It's just a nice street now, and we'd like to keep it that way for the safety of everybody involved. School kids use that to ride their bikes to school in the morning. I haven't heard of anything of a proposed speed limit if it is open. There's, nobody said anything, and you know, people do not follow them. It's gonna be rough. They're not gonna pay any attention at all. It's a self-contained unit. Why can't they have one entrance like a lot of other small developments that you see along Terry going towards New Forty-One? They all have one road to go in and out. For a safer community, for everybody and his residents, if they're going down the street, if somebody goes speeding by, you can be terrified if somebody comes up behind you. You could fall and stumble and get hurt. It's a safety factor, too, for everybody involved. And just please take into consideration the old saying, good fences make good neighbors. You know, everybody would be happy. I appreciate your time for listening to me. I hope you'll take it all into consideration. I was also wondering, I got four letters from people that could not make it tonight. They're short. Could I read them for you with their names?
Uh, no, but, but I appreciate that. You can go ahead and give them to the, the city attorney, and she can give them to us.
...had their own concerns, and because they couldn't come, you know, they felt like they wanted to-
I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much and appreciate your time.
Next speaker, please. And everyone try to be mindful of everyone's speaking here. Thank you. Hi.
Hi, I'm Harry Kessler. I live on Allen Street, and I'm here to oppose or my concerns of extending Longfellow Lane over to Imperial Parkway.
Could you pull that microphone a little bit closer to you, so that I want everybody to be able to hear you? There you go.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay.
Got it.
One of my concerns is that the junction of Longfellow onto Matheson Avenue, it's a, it's a very poor junction. I don't know how you're gonna make and prove, and improve safety. It's, if you're gonna increase the traffic by two or three-hundred vehicles. Another thing is, Longfellow Lane, as the lady before me said, is not very wide, and I don't know what the restrictions are there or the ordinances there. Now adding two-hundred-and-thirty dwellings, there is probably two people, the most of them, a car each, you're gonna, you're adding three-hundred or four-hundred vehicles. Then you have the, the people who will use Longfellow Lane for a shortcut, as was spoken about before, between Matheson and Imperial Parkway. And as you were, you're all from Florida, we know how speed limits are here and how fast people like to cover the road. Also, don't forget all the employees that'll be working in American Homes. Don't forget the service vehicles plus the delivery vehicles. Last but not least, the quality of life in our neighborhoods with the accidents, litter, noise, lights, sirens, pollution, speeding, will not improve our quality of life. And the people in American Homes are renters. They can leave anytime and will never be owners who care about established neighborhoods the way we do. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and councilpersons. My name is John Cerami, C-E-R-A-M-I. I'm a twelve-year resident of, just checking it out, I'm a twelve-year resident of the Gardens of Bonita Springs. I moved here and bought in Bonita Springs because Bonita Springs was up and coming. Little did I realize how up and coming it was. It's a, it's just a beautiful city. We love living here. I'm a current resident of Gardens of Bonita Springs, which is a hundred-and-ninety-six units that is surrounded by, currently surrounded by residential neighborhood. It borders Longfellow pretty substantially and as well as a tortoise preserve, and I, I wanna thank councilperson Janet Martin for assisting us in bringing our tortoise preserve up to standards for which we have spent thousands of dollars in increasing our turtle population from three to forty over the last year or so. And not, I've referred a lot of valid reasons on why we shouldn't open that road in terms of children and so forth, but my concern is some tortoises that haven't been mentioned. And they traditionally cross from our Bonita, Gardens of Bonita Springs to the other side of Longfellow, and that's quite a substantial number that cross there, and I think we have to be concerned about that as well in terms of traffic. Once you open, if you consider opening Longfellow, Longfellow as a, as a cut-through to Imperial, once the residents find out that they can do that, they will probably cut over from Ragsdale down Matthews and, Matheson over to Longfellow to get to Imperial, and I think you're gonna see that start to become a shortcut for these people, which will add to the traffic situation that, that will be anticipated. I'm not, I'm not naive enough to think that this may not happen, and my concern would be to have you think about a contingency and a part of the developer to at least put up a buffer wall along that street to protect not only the children and, and the neighborhood, but the tortoises as well. I wanna thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Carol Cookmore. I live at two-seven-zero-six Jarvis Road, and I'm gonna begin where he ended, which is with talking about the tortoises. I don't know if you're aware, but there are two of the largest tortoises that are in that preserve that were run over during the construction of the American Homes. You can't prove that, but what we do know is that the person who found the tortoise, it was crushed in such a way that a heavy truck had to have hit it. And so that's one concern, is that even the construction vehicles were not terribly careful on that road, and that, we've been patient with that, knowing that construction would end, but I think that gives pause to realize what, what we may be in for. So taking care of the preserve, taking care of the tortoises, but as others have said, the traffic, but there's one thing that hasn't been brought up, and that is the trees. You may also not be aware that the past two seasons, with the trees have been hanging over, my husband, Henry Moore, our neighbor, have called and asked for the trees to be trimmed and trimmed. They've gone and trimmed them themselves. Finally, the trees were trimmed, but what happened is that Longfellow became a single lane, because you couldn't get around those limbs without it becoming a single lane. The other thing is that you cannot get a car in and a car out of Longfellow if you've gone down that road. You cannot, you cannot do that at the same time. The entrance isn't wide enough. So if it is best for all of us, those in the neighborhood, the City of Bonita, with your wonderful plans for extension and the American Homes, that you find that you must open it, then I truly insist that you put a sidewalk, you put speed bumps, you put a, deal with the speed on the road, and you do everything you can to protect the walkers, the bikers, the dogs, the turtles in your, in your best effort. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Oh, I'm sorry, of course. So how, is it, I, I don't know why I say that. I don't know. It's like, there you are. Whoa.
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
My name is Monica Wickliffe. I live at two-seven-zero-five-six Jarvis Road. I've been there forty years. I'm probably the longest residing resident in the neighborhood, and I did not grow up with your children.
And good for you.
I grew up with you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's worse.
I have a, a couple of things. When this was first started, of course, my husband, who was living at that time, and our neighbor came down and addressed their concerns regarding traffic, and then subsequently some things happened, and I had to meet with county staff, who came and called, and we met at the end of the road, and they had told me, your staff, City of Bonita, that they met with the developer, and the developer's plans were to use a gate on Longfellow as an emergency access point only, and that would be the only traffic that would be generated there. Time went by and construction started, and just so you know, I've had twenty years managing a construction office for a high-end developer, not a housing developer, multifamily and high-rises, so I understand the business. So we had pump trucks running down our roads, we had all kinds of traffic. So I sent an email to my councilwoman. She sent me to staff, and I made several suggestions. One was to install signs to prohibit the construction traffic, and they did that. They installed a sign that was just a little bit bigger than this, and it was written in English. Now, the reason why I brought up my construction experience on large projects is because when we did safety signs, we would put them in three languages, Creole, Spanish, and English, because most of the labor force is in, does not speak English. So then installing a sign this big with English only did not communicate what they needed to, to the other people. So one morning, I'm getting dressed for work, and down the road comes this eighteen-wheeler. Now, we are on a privately maintained road. Allen and Jarvis are privately maintained, and we've got this eighteen-wheeler on it. The signs have been installed, so I dressed for work, and I drove over to the project site, and I get out of the car, and there's a man coming out of the trailer, and I said, "Are you the project manager?" And he said, "No, I'm the superintendent." And I asked if the manager was on site, and he said, "No." I said, "Well, we have a problem. That eighteen-wheeler that's sitting right there just came down my road. The signs aren't working, and we need to do something else." I just get so angry when I think about this. So he looked at me and he said, "Well, nothing else is gonna be done." I said, "Well, it has to be done." And he went like this. He said, "Lady, you get your-" He said, "Lady, you get your A double S," and he said the word, "off my project site." So I didn't know whether to be mad or to cry, so I kind of like did both. That was my experience with American Housing, and how they felt about our neighborhood and what was going on in it. Now, because I'm transitioning from work, let me see if I have anything else. Probably no. I would just like for them to do what they agreed to do at the beginning, and that's just use that road as an emergency access only with a gate, and keep our neighborhood like they initially were going to do. So I ask you to keep them at their word. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ah, 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 ah. We're going to treat everybody the same. No, you go ahead. It was them, not you. It's not, it's not me, it's you. No. Hi, come on up.
Hello. Well, good afternoon. My name is Drew, and thank you guys for having a meeting here for us together. I really appreciate us being able to hear things. I've been a marriage therapist, and there's been a lot of negotiation.
Did you say a marriage therapist?
No, not a marriage therapist. No, 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 no.
Go ahead.
But I've also done chaplaincy work for hospice and stuff like this. And sometimes it really takes, I think it's both sides to listen to each other, to hear what each other's saying, okay? And I tend to be more solution-oriented in trying to figure things out. You can hear many of the people that are upset about the way they've been treated. This has been going on for some time, and we're worried about the long-term effects of this. That's what I'm looking at in terms of city council, looking at it at a long-term, not just the recent opening of things. I've got a couple slides, I'd like to see if I could point up here. This is how people have been currently cutting through for the last couple of years. Now, just to remind you, this is where we are in Jarvis, and this is Allen. People have been coming up here, all the way from Pennsylvania and all the way from here at Matheson. They're coming up here, and they're cutting through and avoiding this light where there is no right-hand turn. So people sit at this light. They figured out that they can look all the way down this street, is that you can see the traffic here, and they're shooting up this street. Now, we have three bumps, or speed bumps on here, two on here, and they're shooting through this stuff now, for years. So the speed bumps aren't even working, okay? Another way that someone else pointed out to me today was that, that's not how I would go through Benita Springs if I was coming. He said that if I come down this way, and I go through this light, instead of coming all the way on Benita Beach, I'm going to come down here and cut through Longfellow, Ragsdale, and go all the way through here, and avoid Benita Beach Road. So that's two ways they're cutting through. You know, we can't escape this, but we're going to become more like the East Coast, and our traffic flow is going to increase, and the more we open up these roads that are not designed to handle this, then we're going to have problems, and we're going to have possibly fatalities with the turtles, is a warning to all of us. The next one is another way. If the road becomes opened, this is another way that they're going to be looking to go around it and avoiding this light, shooting down these roads that are private roads, by the way. These are private streets that we have to pay for. The city doesn't pay for these, but all of a sudden, we've got cut-throughs now coming back and forth both ways, okay? And again, avoiding this light. Now, these aren't even the ones that concern me. The ones that concern me is this one. From the center of Benita, anybody, this is the center of Benita, if anybody's coming out here, Old 41 or East Terry, they can get on here on Goodwin, which we all know is already dangerous. There's no sidewalks on Goodwin. There's insufficient lighting on Goodwin. People are going to come up here and avoid not only one light, they're going to avoid this second light. This is somewhat taken care of. Matheson is a little bit wider. But both of these roads are insufficient in terms of width. There's walls being put up here now, so there comes a point where it's like going, "All right." What is it going to be the cost to the city? You're talking widening the roads, you're talking walls, you're talking sidewalks, and we're talking down Goodwin as well, too. We're talking about lighting, those four things. What is that cost going to be to the city? I'm concerned about that as a citizen. I wouldn't want to inherit those costs. But this is what ended up happening, coming back to solution mode, as I told you I would in the beginning. We were with Mr. Gillette, and you'll see how this was not supposed to go through, this original 100 feet, okay? That is now not quite paved yet, but we, that has already been given to Mr. Gillette and American Homes. So they have 100 feet, okay? Now, what we're looking at is, this is what's remaining, three feet left until that road is opened. We are very concerned.
Yeah, go ahead. I'll let you wrap it up, okay? Go ahead.
My point is this, you can see where that there was three feet left, where there's a break in the pavement there. We're asking that if Mr. Gillette, because he was concerned about this, he was afraid people were going to cut through his property coming down the road, going into the neighborhood and coming out. And I heard him in that meeting. I listened to that. And he said, "It divides my property, because I've got two phases here going on." Since he got that 100 feet, he is now made whole. His project is whole. All we're asking for is three feet, and it keeps our community whole. That's a solution, because I'd rather do this, which is zero tax dollars, than how much that would cost looking five, seven, 10 years down the road. That's zero cost.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, the reason, the reason that I ask, or that council has passed protocol for no applause, no jeering, no this, no that, is that it does intimidate people on one side or the other in issue, and I'm sure you would agree that we really want to hear everybody's opinion equally. And if somebody in the audience is of a different opinion of you, although sometimes we wish we wouldn't hear those opinions, we really, we really want to hear those opinions because it's only fair. And in your applause, however, that might be the way you feel, we ask you try to reframe from that, because you will make people not want to say anything, and we do want to hear them, okay? Good. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Erin Sakmar. I actually am an employee of American House. Thank you for that introduction, because it is a little intimidating to stand up in front of all these neighbors that have some misconceptions about our community. First and foremost, I want to thank you for letting us come to Benita Springs and be part of your neighborhood. We look forward to bringing 70 jobs to your community. Some of them are already applying, and some of them live on Jarvis and Allen. And that's in the first year. We'll have 100-plus as we grow. First and foremost, we're not 200 beds. We are 40 memory care units, and anybody that knows memory care, they're not driving. And 68 assisted living beds, vast majority are not driving. And merely 22 independent apartments, which some are driving, but not all. I've met with everyone that has a reservation. So the influx of traffic may be the employees, but we are encouraging everyone to use Imperial as the main entrance to our community. Certainly all the service vehicles, and certainly all the visitors. What we don't want to see is one entrance and one exit to our community. A fallen power line, a tree, could definitely set off the access to our community. It could cause an emergency situation. Fire trucks getting in and out of there should definitely have two ways to get in and out of the property. And our tax-paying residents should be allowed to get to downtown Benita, which is a beautification project in the city plan. They should also be able to access the pet park, the dog park that is now open. They look forward to it, they're talking about it. Also, the city plan talks about connectivity of streets. I think this speaks directly against what the city's planning to do as it tries to grow and prosper. I would like to thank everyone and hope that we can become good neighbors, and if there is a solution, we look forward to working towards it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Grant Lundberg, and I reside at 25174 Golf Lake Circle, Benita Springs, Florida. I've been a resident for 22 years, and my dream was to come down here in the beautiful sun, the beaches, the recreation. Recreation has grown, the city has grown, and the numbers of people have grown, and building, going on, going on. And yet, we're relaxed, I think, in our recreation. It was actually, it was actually five years ago today that I stood before you as before, and presented you with everything you asked for, to purchase the golf course. The book was that thick. We did everything. We got down a breakdown, how much it would cost to run this golf course, how much it would take to buy this golf course, and everything. And at the same time, we had Wonder Gardens go down, we're looking for money. We had the YMCA looking for money going down. So all these things were happening, and all of a sudden, boom, none of us got, we all got dropped. But now, all of a sudden, we're back. Five years later, the communities are growing, people are coming here. People had left because the golf course wasn't there. Now we have new people moving in every day, just about. And now, they keep asking me almost on a daily basis, because they know who I am, "Grant, what's happening at the golf course? What's happening at the golf course?" And then they read this stuff about Wonder Gardens, the dog park. Don't get me wrong, I have nothing against these people. They worked hard to get what they want. But I think we worked just as hard, our committee, to present you people with everything that you asked for. And now, I'm asking again, to go back, reconsider, look the thing over, see what happened to this piece of property, see if its price has gone down, and see what we can do. See if we can't get recreation back here. I've been golfing on weekends at other places, and they quit taking tee times at 1:30 in the afternoon because it's so full. And yet, if we were to get a golf course here, we would have money coming in. They would be there, waiting to come in, you would be getting money into there. Other things, if you have, or donations and everything, that's not bringing money into the city. And here we have, I represent a lot of people around the neighborhood, and I'm telling you, that's why we're all here tonight, to ask you, please reconsider. Please reconsider. And I'll ask my group, don't clap, please. Thank you.
Aw, bless your heart. Thank you very much. Well, you know they're out there, but trust me, it's okay. We see, we see. Come on up.
I speak pretty loudly, so I don't think I need that.
Sweet, you're going to get it anyway.
My name is Steve Baptiste. I reside at 27094 Allen Street, so you can guess why I'm here as well. You know, on a personal note, clearly, kids safe on the streets, I agree. I'm looking to add to the flock myself here in the future. I miss my gopher tortoises that got ran over. It was a bummer. I used to let the dogs play with them. You know, but more importantly, I look at this simply, I always follow the logic of the simplest solution is the best one. What's the best logical approach to this? You know, Allen and Jarvis are both private streets. You know, you open up to public use, now we're footing the bill for that. Like the maps he had up there, you start having people who are going to cut through neighborhoods. Human nature, people are lazy. They're going to take the shortest, easiest route they can. You start presenting people options to take shortcuts through residential neighborhoods, I don't care what kind of signs you put up, they're just going to do it. It's just how people are, that's how they're programmed. You know, you start presenting shortcuts and making it easier for people to do that, it's just how it's going to naturally unfold. You know, even if you closed off Allen Street, what happens? All that traffic, people move one street over to Jarvis, and now would use that as their shortest route. In addition to that, you know, look at streets that are handled to equip large amounts of traffic. Livingston, Imperial, there's countless neighborhoods, north and south. Vesari, Mediterranean, Tuscany Reserve, Milana, De La Soul, all the new developments north of Terry as well. Clearly, Livingston can handle the traffic. It's not a big deal. It's just another neighborhood on the street. It'll be fine. You know, Jarvis, Allen, Longfellow, not nearly as well-equipped for it. Like the one guy said, the few people before me, he hit the nail on the head. Look at the improvements you'd have to do, sidewalks. Revert back to my first thing, the simplest solution is generally the best one. Close one small section of street, let the major traffic take its natural course of flow, use Terry, use Benita as your east-west road, use Imperial as your north-south. And here was one other one that I thought of, ease of direction. If you're not from around here, and you try and navigate Dean Street to Matheson to Longfellow, it's not easy to give directions for all that. It seems like, why would you want to funnel people into a neighborhood where they're probably going to get lost and end up running around on streets that they don't need to be on anyway? Send them the easiest way you can, keep them on Imperial. Just seems like the most logical decision you would make. That does it for me.
Well done, man. Next speaker, please. Hey, Henry.
Hi, my name's Henry Moore. I'm a resident of Jarvis Road. I've been for 15 years, and I'm opposed to the Longfellow opening up. Couple of reasons, mostly like everyone else has said, the Longfellow is a very narrow road. If you've ever driven over there, you're trying to get out on Matheson, if one car's coming out, you're going to have to wait till the other one comes in to come out. Two cars cannot come in at the same time. Along with the trees growing over the road, we've had to call the city on several times to get them to come down and trim, it makes it virtually a one-lane road at some times. Not sure what the specs are on that road, if it qualifies as a road that's wide enough to be a thoroughfare or not. But originally, you know, it was proposed that American House was supposed to be closed off on Longfellow, they were supposed to come out the other way, and I think we should stick with that agreement. That's the way it was proposed, that's the way it should be. You know, the safety of the children, our pedestrians, people walking their dogs, bicycling along this road is a very, you know, safe thing. We need to keep it that way. With the extended traffic on that road, it's not going to help matters at all. And currently, Longfellow, with all the construction over American House, the road is starting to get some stress in it. There's cracks starting in the roads. In the near future, the road's going to have to be repaved, and I don't know if the city wants to go to that expense, or if Mr. Gillette and his development wants to do that now this time, but it's going to have to be widened and improved in the near future. Basically, I just want to say I'm opposed to it, and I hope that before you take any kind of a vote, if you've never driven on Longfellow, that you take a drive down there and see what we're all talking about. We'd like to keep it a safe neighborhood and keep the road closed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Wade. I live on 27052 Allen Street. Been there 25 years. The woman who was looking at the map that said that road went through, we've been there 25 years, it's never gone through. There was a creek running through it when they started construction, which has since Obviously opposed to the deal. I was at the same meeting that Drew mentioned, where the guys showed us the map and said there was going to be a big gate there for service vehicles and for emergency vehicles to come, like a rolling or a swinging gate, I'm not sure what kind, but an electrical gate so that that road would stay at that end. I was there when the people did donuts around at Ladies' Cones, and damn near ran over children on a daily basis. I stepped out in front of trucks several times to stop them and argue with the guys. Private property doesn't mean deadly spot if you're not in a gated community, apparently. But it's still, it's our road, it's a private road. We talked to the police several times, the sheriffs, they said there's nothing they're willing to do, about can't do, I don't know. But they said they can't be called out, you know, about a truck that's gone, you know? Anyhow, the guys all said it better than I can, so we'd appreciate some help.
Good job. Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Portia Salvino. I live at 27088 Jarvis Road.
Could you go and pull that microphone down a little bit? There you go. I want everybody to hear you. Thank you.
Okay. And I am opposed to opening up Longfellow to Imperial. I've lived there 10 years, and I'd like to keep the integrity of the neighborhood quiet like it is now, or like it was before this project started. My understanding was the same as everyone else's, that an emergency gate was going to be put up, which the lady from American was concerned about. There was supposed to be an emergency gate put up for fire and police in case anything happened. I don't know what happened to that. I'm not crazy about breathing in extra exhaust fumes from traffic being increased on that road, which is definitely a concern. I worry about the safety of myself and others that are walking along that road. I walk with my pets, because people are speeding down that road without question, and that's probably why the turtles, two of the longest turtles that have been there in the 10 years that I've lived there, nothing was ever killed on that road, and now all of a sudden, animals are getting killed left and right. So that's a concern. They're driving too fast. Also, the people that are working on that development, either they can't read, or they don't care about the neighborhood, or our feelings about the neighborhood, because they're going down Jarvis, and they're going down Allen in the trucks. I have several names of those that I took, which I don't necessarily have to mention now, but I could do it at another time, that are, you know, big cement trucks going down Jarvis, 5 o'clock at night, 8 o'clock in the morning, and there's a concern. There's kids, there's animals, there's people walking down the street. So I'm not crazy about the noise either. There's a lot of noise going on, and more traffic means more noise. And then you're going to have a lot of transient people going down that street, which don't belong in the neighborhood, and that's a concern, a safety concern. And I guess that's about it, other than what everybody else said. I don't think the road is wide enough for that. Actually, it's smaller than most side roads I measured today. So, yeah, it was about 20 feet where the other ones were 24. It was about, uh, 20 feet where the other ones were 24, so, that's, there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Uh, mayor and members of council, my name is Catherine Backus, and I'm a business owner in Benita Springs, and also a developer, having developed Fairways originally. Um, it was with interest that I read about the Wonder Gardens and the plan, or proposed plan of the city to fund its, uh, operation or its acquisition, and I don't know all the details. And I'm here because I support Grant and the neighbors around Fairways and around the Benita Springs Golf and Country Club, 'cause every day they come into our business, the old 41 Restaurant, and they ask about the golf course. And we had put a, a strong financial plan together as to how it could be economically viable, and I guess the question I have for council is, has anybody looked at the viability and the economic ability for Wonder Gardens, if it is funded, to repay that loan or those funds that would be provided to it? Um, that's my one question, where can we get those answers? And number two, will the council consider another meeting with us with respect to the golf course, so we can examine if that has feasibility, uh, to go forward? Because we also had interest from the Public Lands Trust, and they had expressed interest that if the city would join, there was a possible way that they would contribute funds. So, in support of that, that's why I'm here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, good evening, um, my name's Marianne Appleby, and I'm a new resident at 27022 Jarvis Road, and I'd like to just kind of put my support behind, um, some people ahead of me here that support not opening up Longfellow, because I just really learned of all this recently, since I just moved in November, so I don't really, um, have a lot of history that I can speak to or anything. Um, but what I can say is that I was so excited about moving to this area because it is a quiet street, I have three young children, and we were very excited to kind of find a place to, you know, permanently, um, stay for, you know, this is like our forever home until we, you know, get older and maybe have a change of plans. Um, the other thing I wanna say is that I work, um, in medical field in Collier County, and I travel to homes and nursing facilities and assisted living and communities in Naples every day, all day long. So, I know firsthand about how much traffic these kinds of places create, so I'm very concerned if this road's opened up. You know, it's, um, I understand maybe not a lot of the residents are gonna be driving, um, but, you know, as other people said, it's the vendors, it's the service providers, it's the delivery people, it's people like myself and hospice and, um, different kinds of, you know, medical clinicians, so I really hope that, um, that you guys all just take this into real consideration. Um, I'm gonna be, you know, I won't lie, I'm just gonna be super disappointed, for lack of a, you know, better phrase at this point, um, if they do decide to open it up, and it may even affect, you know, affect my decision in the future to, you know, remain there permanently, because, um, you know, I was looking for somewhere just kind of quiet and out of the way, but, you know, still close, and I, I do feel that Imperial could definitely, you know, handle the additional traffic, maybe with a little bit of, you know, changing of the lanes right there in front of Longfellow. So, that's it, thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Hi, I'm Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel, and I've listened with a bleeding heart, truly feeling for those that are against connecting Longfellow Road. But after 16 years following city politics and watching the citizenry come forward, and that we have a very sophisticated residency, residents, and we are an enlightened little sophisticated burg, we have just initiated a true downtown effort. We have an extensive landscaping project. We are becoming a stellar city to follow the complete streets programs. So when you have fears of Matheson connecting even to Benita Beach Road, or Carolina Street connecting, downtown rejuvenation and all of the little shops that will come will fail without this inner connectivity. So the issue is not American Home funding, the issue is what is our city? We're on the verge of becoming a great city. We're on the verge of having a botanic garden. We're on the verge of looking into a city-owned golf course. Our complete streets program takes away all the fears of the people behind me of four-lane roads and deaths and traffic problems. Complete streets have designated bicycle lanes and walking lanes, and they're heavily landscaped. So some of the fears that came forth tonight are ameliorated by what's already been voted on and accepted by this enlightened council, and I for one am for putting Longfellow through, and don't think I didn't feel or hear or understand each and every one of you that are afraid of it. But there are other things, if you were coming to City Hall on a regular basis, you would know what is planned beyond the opposition of connecting one road. Thank you.
Very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Good evening, mayor and council, Christine Ross, the president and CEO of the Benita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce. So I've had some time to think about this issue, and on the one hand, I see this wonderful $20 million project that in the first year is gonna provide 75 really great, full-time paying jobs with benefits to citizens around the community, and I remember how tough the downturn was. I also have looked at the roads on the GPS, and I think that there's an opportunity for a compromise. I think that there is a way for American House to make sure that every vendor and every employee and anybody that is a commercial vehicle that has to come there, they have to come in the main entrance, and they're gonna have to police it, and they're gonna have to find the people that don't abide by those rules. I think the other side of it is then, the residents, a lot of them are older, notoriously slower drivers, they could then possibly be able to use the, um, Longfellow if it were completed. So, there, there's a compromise that could be had, and then I think absolutely, if that road is gonna be improved, it's incumbent upon us to make sure it's beautiful and wide and safe with sidewalks. And frankly, as far as all of the scary stories I heard about speeding down that road, that's an enforcement issue, and so I think that, you know, I'll be making a phone call tomorrow to make sure that the sheriff's department's aware, from our perspective, of what we heard tonight and how frightening that is, because small children are supposed to be able to play in their yards. So I would encourage you to see if you can come up with a compromise. Try it for a 365-day period, if it fails, then you put in that gate for emergency access. It's just another idea, and it respects the needs of both of these projects, the residents who are wonderful and came here because of the atmosphere, and this interesting new facility that people who don't have a lot of money can now find a place to have assisted living. You know, they don't have to give away their worldly goods, they can rent, a family can utilize the services and be in and out. So, as far as long-term care and the, the demographics of our neighborhood, um, and our, our community and region, I think that it's a really neat project that we should be happy about, and I'm all about compromise, so let's see what we can come up with, please.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Hello.
Hi.
Good.
My name's Pam.
Hey, Pam.
I live on 27023 Jarvis Road. Been there about four years. It's a quiet road, so is Allen, they're both family streets. I have about 20 kids alone on my street. It's all about safety. This young lady, um, talking about getting a hold of the police, talking about patrolling, they're not gonna be able to do that 24/7. You allow Longfellow to be through, the cars are not gonna be watching out for their children. The kids play in their yards and their driveways all day long when they get home from school. That's the biggest issue. These cars, the children are gonna watch out for the cars. The cars are not gonna watch out for these children or the animals. That is the issue. Safety, safety, safety. So please, I ask you, beg you, please, that three feet, like Mr. Drew said, that's all we're asking for, is three feet to block it for his, uh, development and then for ours. Our private roads and for his private development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Hey.
Hi, I'm Josie Severs, and I live on Jarvis Road.
Hello.
And thank you for your time, 'cause I know it's very important to listen to everybody's opinions, so, and there's a lot of cars coming, and my sister and I would like to bike to the ice cream shop that's right on the corner, and we're not gonna be able to do that. And another thing is, people aren't gonna be, um, the trees are getting cut down, and there's more birds flying around, and there's nowhere for them to go. So it'd be nice if you guys could try to find a way to do it in an area that might be a little more efficient for the environment and for people. And, well, I'm not living in fear, we're just facing the reality. It's not gonna, it won't end up working well, 'cause there's gonna be a lot of traffic jams, and people aren't gonna be happy. Have a nice day.
Hey, you too. Good job. Hey, you're allowed to clap for that, that was, that was awesome.
I don't know what I can say that my daughter didn't.
Not this guy, not this guy. Go ahead.
I don't know what I can say that my daughter didn't just touch on. Uh, my name is Mark, I live on Jarvis Road, and we are in favor of keeping the three feet to ourselves and not having it go all the way through. Uh, we definitely agree with Ms. Ross's opinion, uh, and compromise is great, I think it's good that you have a facility for the seniors to go to, but I don't think they need the extra three feet. I think the impact in our community and our families is too great of a cost. We really wanna put the safety of our, our family and friends and our animals first. And it's not so much that kids running around the street, they should be supervised by their parents. So it's just the fact that you have cars, increased volume of cars and traffic, that will create just, uh, more risk and more danger, and that's all.
Thank you very much.
Have a nice evening.
Yep. Hello.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. I have had, been a property owner for 48 years and lived here 31 years, and I would like to add a few comments, since I heard the word Wonder Gardens mentioned. I'd like to remind everyone that the city is not buying the Wonder Gardens, they are making a loan available for which interest will be paid. And someone also, I think the dog park was mentioned, I'd like to remind everyone again that the dog park was built with park impact fees, so we're not talking about the same thing. Now, I am not a member of the board, but I know all the people on there, and they're very respected citizens who have worked to save many other things, including the Y, and I have no problem with the plan they've come up with. Um, I know that they will make available to the city a certified commercial appraisal, there'll be no danger to the city. There are structures being, that, three structures on the property that are being occupied right now, and they're historic, built back in the 30s. How can you put a price on a piece of history, a landmark, right in downtown Benita, with all the plans being made for revitalization? It's just as important as the Lyles. But, uh, since the Wonder Gardens was mentioned in conjunction with something else that's been discussed this evening, I just wanted to bring the true facts in front of you, and thank you so much for letting me do that.
Thank you very much. Uh, anyone else this time? Please come forward. Uh, easy, out there, that's okay. Hey, hey, up here. Hi, thanks. Uh, anyone else like to come to the podium? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Bob DiGiallerma, my house faces, uh, the golf course, and, uh, I'm an avid golfer. Uh, I golf Benita Fairways, I golf, uh, Astero, I golf all over the place. And would I pay to play on the old golf course? You better believe I would. Because a lot of times you can't, especially in season, you can't get a tee time Benita Fairways till late afternoon. And as far as I'm concerned, I've played, I've played just about every golf course around here, and the layout of the old golf course is wonderful. The only problem is, the, the greens are gonna have to be plowed up, cleaned up, a little sprucing up here and there, but it's a wonderful place, and if we can utilize it for open space, 'cause there's wildlife there now, there's all kind of birds, all kind of animals and stuff that, that roam through there, it's a beautiful place, a beautiful trees, and it's a beautiful golf course. And I would think, I would say, think about that, because it is an asset to our community.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none? Uh, and thank you, everyone, for your comments, I really appreciate it, everybody did a great job, so thank you so much. At this time, I have a proclamation, uh, to read here, and it's, uh, let's see, what are we recognizing?
Florida Bicycle Month.
Uh, and I'll go ahead and read this, uh, "Whereas for more than a century, the bicycle has been an important part of the lives of most Americans, and whereas a reduction in automobile traffic and expansion of non-motorized transportation such as bicycling enhances the city of Benita Springs' sustainability and the overall quality of life and well-being of residents. And whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users, and whereas bicycling usage promotes health and wellness in the state, it is an important part of encouraging our citizens to develop habits of physical activity to become or stay fit, avoid obesity, and reduce the risk of many chronic diseases and conditions. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists and Independent Cyclists throughout our state are promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities for all, now therefore I, Ben Nelson, Mayor of the City of Benita Springs, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2015 as Florida Bicycle Month and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of bicycle safety and to be more aware of cyclists on our streets and highways." And I'm going to ask, uh, Councilwoman Martin to accept this on behalf of the bicycling community here, and please, everyone, uh, please give Bicycle a, Bicycle a hand. There you go. Is that it?
Did you get it?
No, she didn't.
Okay.
Take her time.
Thank you.
That was nice. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, I'm pleased to accept it on behalf of the Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Committee that I'm a liaison to, so thank you so much. Anytime that we can raise awareness to bicycle safety is important, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, and at this time, we have a presentation by Robert Gillette, uh, as to the Longfellow road restrictions, as you've been hearing about. And Robert, are you here? That's you, Bob. See, Grant, bye.
Thank, thank you very much. I, um, I do have with me tonight Neil Montgomery, our council representative, as well as Dave McKee, who has been the engineer on this from the very beginning.
You want me to get you a box to stand on top of?
Thank you, Ben, I appreciate it.
Sorry.
First of all, I want to.
I've been planning that for like, a couple of days now. There you go.
First of all, I wanna thank you for allowing me to come tonight and address this issue. Um, I'm not talking on the behalf of American House, and I'm not talking about the contractor that built the building, that's not why I'm here. I'm talking about the frail elderly who are moving into this building, their friends and their family. Granted that there's not gonna be a lot of traffic, the total number of units, and this is 130 to start with, with the second phase that is, is gonna come into the city, which is gonna be magnificent, I will tell you that. But having said that, we're not talking about that many people at this point. What we are talking about is a frail elderly and/or their guests or family driving down Longfellow and going out and circling around on a three- or four-lane highway. That, that, it is, it doesn't make any sense to me that they have to be inconvenienced like that, and a gate or a barrier has to go up as it enters Benita Springs, and our residents, who are now new residents of yours, and there's now 130 of them, have to be inconvenienced, and their family and friends inconvenienced, because a barrier or a gate separates them from taking the back roads into Benita Springs. It has nothing to do with the business, it has nothing to do with the contractor, it has to do with the lifestyle of the people who are moving in here who are gonna be your new citizens. And they, they have a right, just like everybody else, and I don't, I don't take away from the folks that talk here today and, and their need, uh, for, for safety. You know, I, safety, 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 that's all I'm talking about, is their safety, not their safety, the residents' safety, it's the same safety. Now, here's the beautiful part. Beautiful part is, there really is no problem tonight. We are installing a barrier as organ, as agreed to. For the record, I want you to know that when, when Drew Stone spoke earlier, he spoke the truth. We had a very good meeting, of which we, the gate was discussed. The gate, all we asked for was could our residents could have flippers and our office could have clickers, so that people coming in could use the gate going either way, not for trucks coming in, not for all the stuff that you talked about, for the life, the safety of our residents. safety of our residents. I want you to know we were turned down. Now, who turned us down and why? I have absolutely no idea. That gate was by far more expensive than a barrier. We agreed to it five months ago and somehow, somehow, that wasn't good enough. And that was what has been upsetting me for the last four months. And if you think that I don't take this personally, you're mistaken. I'm taking, I've got a, a major project here and my only interest is in the well-being of the residents that we're, we're bringing in here. And the pity of this thing is, they have no idea a gate's gonna go up. So, the people that we've been talking to have no idea that they can't drive into there, their family can't, this is all gonna be new to them. And we haven't told them because we were hoping, well, maybe we could get this resolved, maybe there could be a compromise. That's all I'm asking for, is a compromise. Remember, it's safety, safety, safety. The safety of our residents, not necessarily the safety of the residents on Allen, and it's the same thing.
Easy?
And I'm sorry for my, I, I, look, you gotta understand, I've been living with this for four months. I have never in my life, done this for thirty-five years, ever had anything this convoluted and disproportionate in my entire business career. I have rezoned four elementary schools into senior housing. They're up and operating today, they're the most magnificent things you've ever seen in your life. You, you know how traumatic it is to close a school? This is child's play compared to what I've been through. Thank you for the time. And by the way, I appreciate yours and Steve McIntosh and all of you for what you've done to try to help get this where it is. I'm looking for a compromise too. I'm looking for the safety of our residents.
And thank you very much for, for, uh, coming up here and, uh, everybody. And thank you for everyone's comments. It's, it's gonna be really helpful to, to staff and to, to everyone going forward here. And I'm, I, I feel really confident that going forward over the next few months, that we're gonna be able to work something out to everybody's satisfaction. Okay? Okay, and, uh, let's, uh, we're gonna move on here to the consent agenda. Uh, council, look at it carefully, we have items A through F. A through F, take a check, careful look at it, is there anything you would wish to pull from there or?
I'd just like to pull A.
You want to pull A? Is there anything else?
Move to approve the rest.
We have motion to approve the remainder. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
A point, a clarification, is that as amended by the errata sheet, because I think one of the options on the consent agenda was amended per the errata.
Uh, I would assume so. As per amended-
Just one clarification, thank you.
All right. Items B through F, as amended, uh, by the errata sheet, uh, do we see any other conver, or any comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slachet?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and, uh, item A, Pete?
Yeah, John, could you just talk about that a little bit? Just-
Well, I can, I believe Matt might still be here also, but, um, this is a project that we've had in the works for a while, that we've got grant funding for and that we hope is gonna be able to come in under what we originally budgeted.
Yeah, great. Just wanted, yeah, that's great.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, my name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. Uh, this project is, uh, Phase Two of Oak Creek dredging. Uh, some, I think maybe back in two thousand and ten, the city pursued Phase One through some, uh, grant funding as well that, um, dredged a portion of Oak Creek. This is the second and final phase of the dredging project. We received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, last year from the state legislature to accomplish this. It encompasses dredging about twenty-five hundred yards, uh, around five hundred of it is near the railroad trestle and then-
Matt, excuse me for a minute, could you close that door, please? At some point in time. I'm gonna have to move that party outside here in a second. Go ahead.
And then the, the remaining, uh, two thousand yards is, um, east of the Old Forty-One Bridge and it proceeds easterly to, towards Marco Lane. So, it should, uh, improve the flow through the creek and, uh, finish up this project and, uh, help restore the creek to, uh, what its once natural conditions were.
Any complications or everything going well?
Uh, no, we don't, we don't anticipate any. We worked with the folks that, uh, Dean Street LLC, who own property on the northwest bank, uh, by Old Forty-One, so that we have a staging area, they were gracious enough to, to, uh, execute an easement, uh, for us to use. It's, it's tight, but should be good.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Good, would you like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have motion approved, is there a second?
Second.
Motion a second on item A, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slachet?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, now we are to, uh, second reading of the following zoning ordinance. Audrey, what do you got for us?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Janet, are you ready? Okay. Uh, this is a zoning ordinance of the City of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request to reinstate the master concept plan in zoning ordinance number oh eight eleven for the Saint James Development Commercial Plan Development, CPD, for five additional years or date certain, removing certain uses from the schedule of uses on nine point one two more or less acres located at two seven eight two five two seven nine six one Miller Road, Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. Uh, this is the second reading of the ordinance. The ordinance was originally scheduled for, uh, council's zoning hearing. Due to a lack of a quorum, we moved it to your next available meeting, which is this evening. Um, we also, uh, in the errata sheet, you should find a copy of the participant list, uh, which should be very easy. And I think at this point, uh, Jackie's ready to provide a brief, uh, staff, uh, presentation and then Alexis Crespo, as the consultant, will provide whatever is necessary on their part.
Good evening, for the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. The reason why the applicant is here today, they had a zoning ordinance that was approved with a master concept plan in two thousand and eight. It has since then expired and per our land development code, master concept plans are only valid for five years unless a certain set of criteria are made. And that was not obtained with this, uh, project because of the economy and some other factors. So, the applicant, um, the master concept plan has expired, so they're going through the code required process to reinstate the master concept plan. Um, as part of that process, staff reviewed the existing schedule of uses. We did recommend some uses be removed. We also added a couple of new conditions, one I want to go over tonight that, that's new, but it was in the staff report. It's an environmental condition. Um, the case was heard before a zoning board and it was unanimously approved. Um, and staff also recommended approval with conditions as well. Yeah, just to go over the location, it's in the northeast quadrant of I seventy-five and Bonita Beach Road. And this is the master concept plan that was approved back in two thousand and eight, is not changing at all. So, you got office and retail up in the front, some warehousing here, office retail that's flanking the sides, and some mini warehouses in the back, and then a connection to future development to the east. So, that plan is not changing since two thousand and eight, it's remaining the same. And these were the conditions of approval to reinstate the master concept plan. The conditions that were approved in two thousand and eight will remain in full force and effect. We did modify the schedule of uses, as I said earlier. And this is a new condition that was in the staff report under the environmental section, however, I did not include it as a condition of approval. But staff is asking that you do do that tonight and the applicant has agreed to that condition.
Okay, very good.
That concludes our presentation.
Good. Council, do you have any questions before we go to our list of participants? No? Uh, Audrey, would you mind reading up that list of participants for, for me? I don't, I don't have a copy of that.
Oh, you're being cruel.
Look at me, I woefully unprepared.
Uh, participants are the applicant, uh, only, uh, which they can speak if they want, uh, parties of record who spoke before zoning board, none, so therefore-
Oh.
That, and interested parties, they did not speak before zoning board, so they did not protect their, or preserve their rights, would be Valerie McKinnon and Josh Bachman.
Okay, all right, well, good, thank you. Uh, does the applicant have anything to say before we, no? Good, hey.
Good evening, Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering, representing the applicant. The property owner and applicant is here this evening. If you have any questions of us, we're in agreement with staff's, um, added condition, um, as well as the findings in the staff report and we would respectfully request approval. And I'll just add that Mr. Sturdivan purchased the property after the MCP expired, so he was not responsible for having it have expired.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions, council? Uh, what's your pleasure?
Approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, so, there's a motion and a second, any other, uh, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slachet?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And, uh, we are to public com, oh, did you have, I mean, there's nothing else you have under that, right? No, nothing? Good. I don't see anything. All right, we are to public comment on any, uh, city item. Anyone wishing to speak on any city item, please come forward.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
For the record, Kathy McGrath, and here I am with the good news. Okay? First of all, last night at the Bonita Springs Utilities, uh, meeting, they were once again awarded the twenty, twenty-fifteen Distribution System Award from the Florida Section of American Waterworks for Excellence in Water Quality, Backflow Prevention, Safety, and Several Other Things. This, they've gotten this four out of six times, so, good for them. And the other thing, the cleanup last Saturday. I don't know who was all there, I saw some familiar faces, but I'll tell you one thing, it was the biggest participation that we've ever seen. And I was over on the river because the Imperial Conservancy did their thing with the help of fifteen members from the Bonita Bay Fishing Club who gathered all kinds of goodies and, uh, Jackie Langston from the Astero Bay Aquatic Preserve also joined us, thanks to John Pano, who, he let her use a canoe free of charge and he made four others available. So, it was really a successful day, it was just, just wonderful. Bark in the Park was there, I mean, downtown was just, just jumping, it was just great. And that's my good news for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on any city item, please come forward. Seeing none? Well, go ahead and, uh, move along. And Audrey, I think that you're back on, uh, base here, to number ten.
I am, on the backyard. Thank you. Okay, this is the City of Bonita Springs Backyard Hen Ordinance, creating an ordinance to allow a limited number of hens on residential property, providing a permit process, revocation, transfer, and enforcement, providing for conflict, inclusion in code, severability, and providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of the ordinance, it has not been advertised yet because it's not going in the land development code, but in our general code. So, therefore, there is no public comment at this time. Um, if council approves the ordinance tonight, it will go for a second reading and public hearing on March eighteenth, um, in this, uh, in these chambers, beginning at nine thirty AM. Uh, the ordinance is pretty self-explanatory, it follows the administrative code that you had, there were some new provisions. One, we will be charging for a permit. Uh, a second change was real, um, there's still a limit as to the number of permits and there was enhancement as to enforcement and revocation capabilities in the event somebody with a permit is not doing things appropriately in accordance with the, uh, policy.
Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll, I'll move to approve, uh, in a second, for just a quick discussion. This is an important part of our environmental sustainability strategy, uh, locally grown food sources and, including farmers markets and, and, uh, it, we had no issues with this, uh, it should be approved and I'd ask for, I'm making the motion, ask for a second, please.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd be glad to second.
Oh.
Nope, that's okay.
No, please.
No, that's okay.
We're gonna give this one to Janet.
Give it to Janet.
Janet, 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 second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Here's the picture of the little coopy I want to get.
Aww, it's so cute. Remember, it's only twenty-five.
I can't wait.
I got good news for you, Tom says he's building that, it's your dream home.
I'll be living with them.
I better be careful, it might be my dream home, anyway. Uh, any, any other discussion or smart remarks from council, like me? Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slachet?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, thank you, council, and we are to city attorney's report.
Uh, the first thing I'd like to do, and you don't have an actual green sheet for this, is I want to introduce Assistant City Attorney Alexander Boswell Ebersole. Alexander started on Monday with my office. Uh, some of you have had the opportunity to meet him, I hope you all, uh, get a chance, uh, soon. Uh, he comes from Gainesville, Florida, so North Florida, he is a native of Florida.
I can tell by his name. That's what you got coming, buddy, all right?
And, uh, he's been practicing for a few years, he does have an advanced degree after law school, you're allowed to go for additional degrees and one is called an LLM, which is a Master of Law, and he has one in environmental land, environmental and land use.
All right, well, good. And welcome, welcome to Bonita Springs, everybody give him a hand. And anytime you want to talk about and sympathize and stuff, you come to me.
No, we're gonna talk about golf and tournaments.
I've been, I've been around, I've been around Audrey a long time, so you just, it's okay, I, I understand, trust me, okay? That's inappropriate, wasn't it? All right, anyway, go ahead, Audrey, carry on.
Um, the next item's interesting because I labeled it the brief discussion, which, I apologize for that part, on the old US forty-one redevelopment overlay district amendments. And the reason I did so is, we have a new draft of the ordinance, I did send you the draft previously. Uh, this is another, uh, draft, I did not put scheduling dates because we were looking at that time to coordinate, uh, concurrently with the next item, which is a comprehensive plan amendment. Since that time, we did talk to one of the, uh, property owners who is one of our partners in redevelopment, Shangri-La, and, uh, they did ask for us to postpone on the cop plan amendment item. I did tell them that there are things within the zoning ordinance that really kickstart, for example, if you read in the green sheet, the longitude development, um, that council has been briefed on, um, where we, there are other things where we want to go forward. So, uh, this ordinance will have some adjustments, uh, to accommodate any concerns by, you know, of our partner, Shangri-La. But otherwise, uh, I believe we will be going forward and, give me a little latitude, I don't know if I'll schedule it March eighteenth, April one, or if I'll schedule it April one, April fifteenth. Um, but that, we'll probably talk a little bit more, or, um, I'll work with the clerk's office and community development after our local planning agency meeting tomorrow morning at nine AM on this ordinance. Uh, Jackie is here and she can tell you about the changes to the ordinance.
Okay, Jackie.
Good evening, for the record, Jacqueline Genson with Community Development. Um, as Audrey stated, there's a couple of moving parts here. Originally, when we met with you back in August at the workshop, uh, there was discussion about creating an industrial arts district, which also included expanding the overlay. But as Ms. Vance stated, um, in order to do that, we needed to amend the comprehensive plan and the zoning document. to amend the comprehensive plan and the zoning document, and we are gonna probably most likely postpone that so we can work with the Shangri-La, make sure it's in keeping with the city's vision and also their vision. But the other changes are, as item number two is, our case project for downtown is coming to fruition, and part of getting them there is coming up with a conversion factor, dealing with floor area ratio and density. And actually, the author of that concept is Jay Sweet, so I'm not even gonna discuss that, so I'll let him go ahead and take that after I'm done. The other item that we're changing is Table four dash eight-six-nine, which is the list of uses by subarea. We wanted to go ahead and tighten up a couple of areas where we thought there needed to be some clarification, and also add some uses that we felt were appropriate in some of the sub-districts. And then the last item is, we went ahead and modified some standards for the outdoor dining section of the code, and also outdoor display. Outdoor display was not, was silent in the downtown area, and reverted back to the LDC regular section, which provided a lot of flexibility that we probably don't want downtown. Downtown is a different environment, so we went ahead and created standards for outdoor display. I looked at several different jurisdictions for that downtown areas, so we looked at Gulfport, we looked at the City of Winter Park, the City of Naples, City of Fort Myers Beach, how are they doing that? And staff went ahead and coordinated with code enforcement on that, because they're the ones that have to actually implement this ordinance. So, there's a lot of coordination with other jurisdictions and our staff to make sure that section was done correctly. So, I also have Jay Sweet, so I'll let him go over the conversion factor.
Before you do, just for clarification for everybody who's maybe listening, maybe listening, parts of this are going to have to be comprehensive plan amendments, or does this have to be in a specific sequence? You've described one part of this that's permission to advertise a comprehensive plan amendment, but there are also parts of the zoning ordinance that you're going to modify?
Correct.
Right.
And the zoning can go ahead and go forward.
The zoning can go ahead and go forward now, okay.
And that won't have a problem, but in order to add that additional piece of industrial, which should have probably always been there, that needs a comprehensive plan amendment.
What about the density conversion range? Does that have to go through comprehensive plan?
No.
Okay, good. All right, carry on.
Okay.
All right.
Pretty good.
Hey, fifteen years, man.
To keep it, to keep it sort of simple and brief, what happened, and I know there's been discussion about having a case study of, you know, are the rules and the things we're coming up with really gonna work? And we've been working with several people down there, and one of the things that we've realized is that to make things work, you need some increased density in some areas to make it work. And we are also concerned, though, about not allowing someone to come in and say, oh, it's commercial, it's gonna be all residential, and that doesn't work either. And so, in a nutshell, what we've done is we've come up with a conversion factor, and the conversion factor has a rational nexus converting intensity and density. And without getting into, way into the weeds with the math, basically, this much commercial, when I look at holistically all the different uses, equals this much square footage for the same amount of traffic that this type of unit would generate. And so, that's the conversion factor. And then what we've done is said that even if we want you to conversion factor, when I look at the additional units, and I look at your commercial, I need to have more commercial of intensity than residential density in that conversion factor. That guarantees that we're still getting a very true mixed use. And then we have other things in there that the first floor has to be commercial, that it's the upper floor is to be residential. So, we have a whole series of factors in there, but the holistic nut of it is that basically, they lose four hundred square feet of commercial, they get one unit, but the overall intensity of the project has to be more commercial than residential.
Good. Is there, is there, in these calculations, is there some, such a thing as internal capture that you're taking into consideration with that?
Actually, I specifically avoided internal capture, because what happens, when you get into that, you get into a lot of skewing of numbers and how you do it, and it was much easier to keep it simple, so that we could identify that this is the intensity of the commercial, and this is the barking or the density ratio. And then reason is, is that by doing that also, the capture's a bonus.
Right.
So, we haven't shot ourselves in the foot by trying to calculate a capture, and then giving something even more. The capture will be a bonus with the way that we've done it.
And you don't have to go into that discussion also, because you're confining this to this particular district, which has that particular character inherent in it, so you don't have to go into that. If you went outside of there, you'd have to have that conversation, but inside, where you were at in this district, it's just, it's just a given.
Correct. And the other thing is, is by keeping it within this very specific district, I'm also, it's also easy to identify and quantify uses to get the ratios. So, like I said, there's a very rational nexus to it, that's very defensible and at work, and, you know, like I said, if we really want to, I can spend a half hour and show you through the math, but...
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, anything else for you, for us? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jay before he has his seat? Any questions? Good. Jay, thank you very much. And Jackie, do you have anything else for us? Good, and, okay. So, that was, that was our brief discussion. And did you want to, on item C, do we want to put this off? Is that what you're saying? Or we want to go ahead and carry on with it?
Let's just talk briefly. When you had your meeting in August, your workshop, council said that they wanted to expand Industrial Street, so it was both sides of the street. It's a consistency issue. One of the major property owners, so it's only twenty-six lots off of Heitman subdivision, and the revised ordinance is in your errata sheet, by the way, with all the maps and all the pictures. So, it's one side of the street from Industrial Street to the railroad tracks, from Benita Beach Road to Oak Creek. I think that's pretty good, my layman's description. It was easier to actually do it by plats this one time. Staff also wants it to be continued because we're maybe thinking about doing some text changes in addition to this, I mean, this would be a small scale, small scale from state of Florida perspective is very easy. The problem is, is that the property, we have one of the property owners, you know, we sent out notices, one of the property owners is concerned, and so we'd rather have them buy in than go forward, but also, at the same time, we'd also maybe like to think about doing a couple text amendments also. So, doing this more holistically as one document in the near future, rather than going forward with it today. I think this was a good start, the one that's in the errata sheet.
Good to me.
But having something with a little bit more, maybe more productive in the long run for the redevelopment area.
So, for item B, did you want to go ahead and have council schedule something for those hearings?
For B, I think we'll schedule it probably April first and April fifteenth.
Okay, do you need to have a motion to, for council to go ahead and schedule that for advertising?
Yes, please.
Counsel, would you like to do that?
So, move.
Motion, is there a second? A motion and a second? You need a discussion? This is for B. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
And on item C, you want to continue that?
I'm going to continue that, and it'll come back to you in a little bit different form.
Would you like us to continue that?
I don't think you need, I mean...
Just permission to advertise.
It was a permission to advertise, or you're just gonna withdraw it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good.
It's not gonna hold up the longitude project, is it?
No. No, this is only strictly Industrial Street.
Okay.
All right, good point, Mike. All right, good, yes.
I've read a lot of the correspondence on the one business owner, you know, I just want to make sure we have done everything we can to answer the questions, and it's a longer-term issue, if I remember the issue correctly, but while we take, have this little break, let's get, let's get back to, make sure we do as much as we can.
Absolutely, and I haven't seen any correspondence, so if you could share, that would be awesome.
Well, it has your name on it, so it's...
Oh, you're talking about the email, I see. Okay.
Okay, good. Thank you, counsel. Audrey, you have anything else? You, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, city managers report. That's you, John?
Yes, it is. You have one item on the agenda for tonight, and I think the green sheet does a fair job of laying out what we're looking for tonight in terms of discussion on the visioning project. Just to put it in context, we'd like to get some discussion, some feedback from council about three different things, and whatever else you decide to add on, but the three things we're looking specifically for is for feedback from council on the timing that's being proposed in terms of bringing this forward, and then also, from a higher elevation, looking at this holistically, have we captured the intent and the flavor of where council wanted to go in terms of this proposal? And then boiling it down to even a lower level, specifically, is there any language in here that we've used that you feel needs to be amended before we finalize it? So, what you have beyond the green sheet is about a three-page scope of work that will be included in an RFQ, and that's what we need you to focus on tonight.
Okay, you mentioned three specific items that you...
Yeah, again, the timing.
Timing.
The general flavor of where you're trying to go with the visioning project, and then any specific changes to the language that we've already included.
Okay. Counsel, any comments? Any, what do you think? Is everybody good with this?
No, I'm good.
You're all good?
Again, the timing is, we will probably be bringing this back to you because the, it still works in terms of our overall plan. We'd probably be bringing this back to you on April the first. We will incorporate this language together with what's normally known as the boilerplate that goes with the normal RFQs and RFPs. So, it'll look a little bit different in terms of the bulk of it, but it will be generally reflective of what you have here in front of you.
Good, good. Do you, you need some motion on that? Do you need that?
Nope, just direction, and it sounds like we're on the right course.
I think, I think you got it. You got a lot of nodding heads up here. Good. You got anything else for us, John?
That's it. Other than Carl's apologies for not being able to be here tonight, I think you all know that he's off to...
Carl phoning in, huh?
Oh, he's off to...
All right, well, good. Thank you very much.
Family function.
He's not texting, is he?
No, he better not be. Well, he'll be texting me now. Thank you very much. Okay, mayor and council member items. Resolution congratulating the citizens of Astero upon the creation of a municipal corporation. Okay, there we go. Let's see, I don't have, do I have a copy of that? Here we go. Oh, okay.
While you're looking, may I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
The, I've said this before, and I can't be at the first council meeting, I'm gonna not be available, but I don't want that to take, anybody to take that other than, I just can't be there. So, this, you know, I've said this many times, I'll say it again, congratulations to the people who are gonna be running the Village of Astero. I'm proud of you for taking that responsibility on. We are, we have so many things in common, the two, the two entities, the hospital, environmentally sensitive areas, roadways, economic development, that we are so much stronger as one voice, and we will be. So, once they're up and running, I look forward to working with them and making sure we make good strides in South County.
Good. And this is a resolution that we'd like council to approve. I'd like to go ahead and read it, just for the record. Resolution congratulating the citizens of Astero upon the creation of a municipal corporation to be known as the Village of Astero, and offering the aid and assistance to the City of Benita Springs to the new village in its startup and transitional phases, congratulating the council members on their election, and providing an effective date, whereas citizens of Astero have voted to create their new municipal corporation, and whereas they have elected their first council members and are going about the business of organizing the affairs of the village, and whereas the citizen of Benita Springs fifteen years ago went through the same darn thing, no, it didn't say that. Fifteen years ago voted for the creation of the City of Benita Springs, and whereas it is in the best interest of both the Benita, City of Benita Springs and Astero to initiate and maintain mutual aid, cooperation, and assistance, now therefore be resolved, the City Council of Benita Springs, let's see, the City of Benita Springs hereby congratulates the citizens of Astero, the City Council of Benita Springs hereby expresses best wishes to the newly-elected members, and encourages the council members, administration, and staff, citizens of Benita to cooperate and provide encouragement to the citizens of the Village of Astero on their transition. We would also, as part of this resolution, we'd like any of you to, when is their first meeting?
Seventeen.
Saint Patrick's Day.
Oh, gosh.
So, you know what? Whatever condition you want to go to the meeting, that's your business, but I know what I'll be doing. Anyway, so...
There's public drunkenness issue.
Is there really? Not any, they don't have a rule for that yet.
No, actually, it's, they statute, their first year, they get a free, they don't have an issue for recall first year, but that could always be an issue for...
Oh, there you go, see? There you go. Lucky them.
Already offering them legal advice.
We would, we would encourage you to come, come up to, and speak at their, at their meeting and offer your congratulations to it. And at this time, would you like to pass the resolution, counsel?
I would. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second right here. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Okay, thank you guys very, very much. And at this time, we have item B. Councilman Slakka.
Yes, well, as the liaison to the Veterans Advisory Committee, it's my responsibility to bring forth to the council the, their recommendations, and their recommendation is to rename the park at, as Veterans Memorial Park. And I support it, and however, I did, I don't know if it's ex parte, Audrey, but I did receive a call from a former councilwoman, Martin.
It is not.
Former councilwoman Simmons today.
I'm former already. Get that.
Simmons today regarding this particular issue, and she suggested I talked to the president. I did talk to him. There appears to be some misconception of what the potential plans were. The misconception, and I straightened it out with Bob, that the scoreboard was gonna come down, and we're gonna name it, you know, take that away. He said, no, that's a donation that you folks made. I don't, I've never heard any plans about taking a scoreboard down. And the second thing, which I didn't have an answer for, is that just, he wanted to know whether the league, whether the school board will recognize the Lions Club as donating that property. So, I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
And, but I move to support the request by the Veterans Advisory Committee.
There's a motion, is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Where is a second for discussion? Could I ask you a question, Steve? Was the Veterans Committee, were they aware of the Lions' concerns when they made this recommendation?
Not at all. I had never received a phone call from, except today.
Do you, do you think, considering some of the, the Lions are very active in the community, and there are concerns there, would it be worth, would it be worth taking back and getting the, the input, or getting the committee to consider the input that the Lions Club have given? I'm just asking.
I don't, I don't know where that would change anything. I think that this was the name they came up with. It was done in conjunction with the, you know, the wounded warriors amputees, and so, again, my job is to bring it forth to council. If the council feels differently, I will go with the wishes of the council.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Well, I was just, I guess, along those lines, right? They didn't have concerns, or they didn't know about these concerns, and now, you know, there are concerns.
The Veterans Committee didn't have...
Right, right, exactly. And now there are concerns, so I'm just, I don't know if...
Well, Steve, would, would you mind if, or council, would you mind if, if the, if this got taken back? I don't think it would cost us anything but a little time here and there. Take it back to the Veterans Committee, get them to look at it. Maybe they can come up with something that's a really good compromise between the two there, or it's, it may be worth just trying to be sure that, because there's a lot of veterans who are Lions, and a lot of Lions who are veterans, and that type of thing, and I would really like them to see it come to some kind of consensus there.
Well, I don't, I don't have any problems taking it back. I don't think the decision will change, but, you know, that's, that's up to the council.
Okay. Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure?
Well, we have a motion in a second to approve this.
To approve it.
Yeah, I know, I'm just asking your opinion.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Any other conversation?
Yeah, I'd like to see it go back to the committee and see if they have any other input on this, you know, with the new light of the Lions donations and, over the years.
Okay, okay, and any other, yes?
I'll chime in too. I'm, I'm one hundred percent supportive of this, but let's let the, let's let the board hear this new information, and then bring it back at the next council meeting, and be glad to go for it at that point.
There you go.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not unsupportive of it. I almost wore my wounded warrior amputee softball jersey tonight, because I was all for it until I, you know, learned of the controversy with the Lions, so.
Well, it'd be nice to have that heard anyway, in, in that venue first, and then if their recommendation stands the same, it stands the same.
So, let me, let me understand, your recommendation, do we take it to the Veterans Advisory Committee and inform them about the Lions' concerns about the name?
Well, just, just about what we heard tonight. I think, I think what we need to have them is to let them know what the history, and let them hear everything that we've heard, and let them be privy to everything that we've heard. I think it'd be only fair to them, because I don't know that some of them, I have no idea, but I don't know that some of them would have been like, oh, I wish I would have known that, or, you know, I maybe would have thought differently or something. So, I mean, that's just...
Maybe, maybe it'd be good if you had the President of the Lions Club come to the Veterans Advisory Board, just to make that...
And the thing is, after I talked to him, he, you know, both of us are Air Force, after I talked to him, he seemed to be okay with that. He was more concerned about some of the other things.
We can't help you when you're in the Air Force.
I know. But anyway, he didn't, he didn't seem to have some, there were apparently an older generation that had had a lot of concerns only, but...
Sorry, you made the motion, you want to amend it, or?
No, I'd rather, you know, this is what the Veterans Advisory Committee, and, you know, if you disapprove it, then I do what you gotta do.
Okay, okay, there's still a motion and a second to, to approve this, and to, and actually, the, the motion is to, to name it, what is the name?
Veterans Memorial Park.
Veterans Memorial Park. So, there's still a motion and a second on the floor? Any other discussion? Yes?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, not that I need to reiterate this, because Janet said it very, very well. In full support of this, however, gonna vote against it, just to allow a few more weeks for them to talk about it and meet, and meet about it.
Okay, and, and if it does not go through, we will have a chance to make another motion to have it taken back to them, or something to that effect, if you wanted to, if it doesn't. Okay, we'll go ahead and have a roll call, and this is to approve this as Veterans Memorial Park. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
No.
Councilwoman Martin.
No.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
No.
Councilman Simmons.
No.
Councilman Gibson.
No. Got Neil done that one?
Well, no, you're all right.
No, I didn't. You're just gonna bring it back next time.
Is there another motion? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we bring it back after the advisory, Veterans Advisory Board has looked at it with consultation with the Lions Club, and look at it again.
Second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
One point of clarification first. Councilwoman Martin mentioned that it would come back possibly at your next meeting, since we're trying to coordinate between the Veterans Committee meeting and possibly getting a representative from the Lions. It may not come back at your next meeting, is all I just want to say.
The next, next available meeting.
The next available meeting.
Okay, is that good?
Good for me.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
That'd be me, aye.
Okay, I mean, two great organizations, two groups of wonderful people.
Yep.
Need to get them on the same page. That would be the best thing for everyone. That would be great. Okay, anyway, so, let's start down here with...
Thank you very much. Just real quickly, John, I've lost track over five years where we are really with the golf, Benita Springs Golf and Country Club, and I know they brought forth a proposal, I thought, we looked at it and thought it probably wasn't going to work, but would you just take a look, next meeting, we can have a little discussion about where that is, and what their, you know, what the plan was?
We'll be able to pull out our records from the last time this came up, I'll give you a little status memo, send it out, and then...
Yeah, that'd be great.
You would take it from there, if anywhere.
Brief history and time would be good.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, I mentioned last time, the academic year for our government days is over, but I have a, a nice thank you note to council from the middle school folks, and I'll just read a portion of it, and it talks about the, the mock city council process, and how much fun it was, and what they learned, but it also says, "We'd like to thank you for the tour of the education along the way about the roles and districts of each of the members of the council. It was generous of you, made us feel welcome and wanted, as well as contributed a perfect trip experience." So, thank you, council, for supporting that, thank you, staff, for helping that work so well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good deal. Janet?
Thank you.
You have for us?
I got to stand up, because I need to hold this up. Saturday is the Susan G. Komen Walk Race at Coconut Point, it's, City Hall has a team, we will be walking and running, there are people doing both, I just want to urge everyone, we all know someone that breast cancer has touched, and if you can't walk or run, please donate, we've got to get an end to this awful, awful, awful thing. Thank you so much.
Yay, Janet. Anything else for us, Janet?
That's it, thank you.
Counselman Slakka, what do you have?
Mayor, along with what Janet said, I, I am a faith-based person, and I do pray daily, and I do recognize Diane and your daughter, Chrissy, for what she's going through, and of course, what mom always goes through, so, God bless you, our prayers are with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike, what do you got?
I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
How about you, Pete?
I just, you know, want to echo, congratulations to Astero and all of the winners up there, congratulations up on Sanibel, to Chauncey Goss and Jim Jennings, and regarding the Benita Golf and Country Club, I obviously have had, had some calls, it is in District Four, and echoing on what Council McIntosh said, and let's, let's see what's there, and let's have the discussion, John, thank you very much. And, hey, congratulations to us, hey, we're public citizens, officials of the year, wow. Up to that point, I don't know if anybody had noticed, but on the program, there was three nominees in each category, the person, or the category that was listed first, up to the point that we won, that was listed first, won, I said, okay, so I guess that means we came in third place, because we were listed third, but listen, it's an honor to serve with each and every one of you, congratulations. Commissioner Larry Keiker does an admirable job, as does the city of Fort Myers, so there are no losers, everybody's a winner, and just congratulations to Benita Springs, and serving with all of you, thank you.
May I add to that?
Yes, please.
That's one of the first times we've been unanimous in a decision for a while.
Bingo.
But secondly...
And there's only six of us here tonight.
But secondly, among the rising stars, they were all... I don't know where Bill is, but that's...
He's on the love boat.
Among, among the rising stars, who were also recognized that day among the students, our own Astero High School, Matty Serna House was one of the three out of Lee County, he was recognized as being a rising star, so congratulations to Matty as well.
Okay, and, let's see, let's see, next week is our legislative days, right?
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, most of the days. I will be going up, Council, Council McIntosh and I will be going up Monday early, so we can have dinner with the governor, woo! We got invited to go have the, the head, he does a community dinner every once in a while, so we got invited to go up there for that, so we'll be going up early. I don't know how Steve's going back, but I'm flying back with you guys.
You get it.
I'm leaving him on his own, he can just...
I'm vacationing Tallahassee, right?
You're a grown man.
I'm staying.
That's a horrible place to vacation. I can't think, it is. It's terrible. And then I want to mention the Benito Middle School fence, I think I finally got there, I think, I think I have got $31,000. Thank you to everybody out there.
That's awesome.
It took, it took a little longer, the well, the well went dry a couple of times, but that, it's, it's going to get done, I got news from the, the school district that it will probably only take about thirty days to, to get this done, we're going to go ahead and get them a check written from the account there, and...
Awesome.
You're not going to believe the difference it's going to make in that school, it's going to be just awesome. So, thank you to everybody out there, and, and I got to tell you, so many of the companies, so many individuals really stepped up, and it was amazing. I have to mention one in particular, our, our good friends at the Camuto Group, new, new in town, new in town, right, and one phone call, and he says, you know what, you guys have been nothing but good to us, how's $5,000?
Oh, wow.